Being at seven o'clock, we'll go ahead and call the planning commission meeting to order the study session for March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. First item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I don't see Ann here tonight, so John, you gonna take the role?
Yeah, Agostinelli?
Here.
Robertson? Klein?
Here.
DeGud?
Here.
Ressing is absent, excuse. Fudge?
Here.
And McManus?
Here. Okay. Well, the first item on the agenda is public comment, and I don't see any public here tonight, so I think we'll just skip over that for now and move on to review and approval of the agenda. If you had any conflicts of interest, now would be a time to state those. Whoop. Yeah, we do have public here, so. We had our first public comment already in, okay, alright. So, uh...
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Support. Motion made and supported to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion on that? Hearing now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Okay, minutes from the March eighth meeting. Anybody have any comments or corrections or anything they'd like to see amended and no?
I'll make a motion that we adapt the minutes.
For?
Motion made and supported to approve the minutes from the March eighth, two thousand and twenty-three planning commission meeting. Any discussion on those? Hearing now, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Correspondents. John, any correspondence for us?
Uh, there's one item on the, on your desks. It's, uh, a notice from Long Lake Township, and they are going through a master plan amendment. Uh, they're not, it's a notice of intent to plan, so they're not rewriting their entire ordinance. It's just a portion that will adjust the boundary of the North Village Center within the township, so they have to go through the same process, um, typical notifications of a master plan. Also on your desk is a, a map that intended to add kind of to the conversation when we, um, talk about, uh, vision and core concepts and, and kind of the layout related to districts, nodes, and corridors, and we'll cover that later on the agenda. That's it.
Is there any neighboring municipality that's not planning right now? It seems like we've gotten an intent to plan from everybody around us lately, so...
You're right, I was thinking the same thing.
Yeah, so, alright. Uh, reports. Molly, anything from the town board?
Uh, well, it's not really from the town board, but, uh, this is coming out of Lansing. There's, uh, some bills moving through the legislature that will change, uh, the way that we use brownfield dollars. I don't know if you're watching that, but, uh, it would change to include all residential infrastructure. So, the restrictions that were on before, um, it will become more lenient, more open to using those brownfield dollars, and from what I understand, it's moving pretty quickly, so we might want to watch that. That's it.
Alright. Okay, any planning commissioners have any reports? How about, uh, ZBA? Bob?
We had no meeting.
Yeah. Parks and Rec?
We have not met since the, before the last planning commission meeting.
Same with the joint planning commission. We only meet quarterly, and we've already reported the last one there. So, staff, anything we have to report tonight?
We do not.
Okay. Alright, I see, uh, nothing under unfinished business, which moves us on to seven A, which is our master plan update, uh, housing analysis and recommendations, meeting with neighbor, neighboring communities and vision and core concepts. So, who's gonna tackle that?
Yeah, so I'll kind of facilitate, uh, and this is really intended to be a discussion.
Right.
So, uh, following the joint meeting they had with the town board last month, the goal now is to kind of kick off and go, go start going through the planning process. So, we're gonna be kind of going through almost like chapter by chapter, just as we talked about early in the year. And, uh, for this month, what we want to do is, um, we're not necessarily working on the housing, uh, chapter itself. We'll, we'll come back with a draft for that, I believe, in June, at the June study session. But at this point, what we wanted to do was kind of go through, uh, and this is kind of a summary. You've seen some of this data before, related to the housing analysis, understanding, uh, housing within Garfield Township. But then also getting some feedback from the planning commission on some concepts, so that, uh, staff can kind of draft out some ideas and some content that would actually go in terms of a, a housing goal and housing objectives that would, would fill in that portion of the master plan. So, I'd like to kind of go through that with you, as well as a couple other items that we have. Uh, we did want to summarize the meetings that we had with, uh, neighboring communities. So, we've met with the city and some of the townships, and we kind of wanted to, uh, just recap the, those conversations, uh, with you related to land use and some of the corridor connections. And then the last part is to, uh, talk about this, uh, the mission, vision, and core concepts. Uh, and this is kind of a foundation. You know, the master plan itself is, is focused on future land use, but there are other elements to a master plan that helps us make decisions related to land use and land use development. So, this is kind of a more broader, uh, approach to that, um, that gives kind of a good foundation for the overall plan. And it ties back to, and we'll get into this later, but it ties back to the strategic plan that the town board established a few years ago. So, that strategic plan is kind of the basis, and so the discussion we'll have tonight is kind of building on that, um, and kind of creating some character identification of different areas within the, within the township itself. Um, so that's kind of what we'll be going through. And again, this is intended to be feedback that we can get from you on, on some of these things, so that we can start drafting some of the, the content. Um, so the housing analysis, what I wanted to do is, is kind of go through, um, what kind of the current state of housing. We, we did a lot of this last year. We threw some data at you. We've talked about different concepts, but now we're kind of narrowing it down. So, I'm just gonna kind of go through the recap, and then some specific recommendations that we have. The recommendations will be kind of, um, kind of twofold. There'll be recommendations to go in the master plan. One of the things that the master plan does is it provides, uh, policy directives on how you want to deal with certain things within the, in the township. So, this is gonna be focused on, um, on, uh, kind of those housing-related aspects of issues in the township. So, for instance, when we get into that, talk about, um, the township has a pilot ordinance, payment and move, uh, taxes ordinance. The master plan can provide some foundation, you know, why do we do that? You know, what's the basis for it? Um, it's, so it's helps to kind of have that foundation. Um, and then there'll be also some recommendations related in there, uh, to zoning ordinance amendments. So, one of the primary tools, and there are other tools, but one of the primary tools that we do for implementation of the master plan is through the zoning ordinance. That's the regulatory piece. That's when you're, uh, at your business meeting that you have at the beginning of the month, where you're going through and applying that, those regulations, as well as, um, other ways that we do that, through administrative reviews of items and so forth. Uh, the, the master plan provides a strong foundation for that ordinance, and there can be some recommended changes to that, some tweaks to it, um, that will, uh, where the master plan provides that direction. We're not gonna change the ordinance right now, but the discussion here is if there are some things that we want to see done differently in Garfield Township. The place to start it is within that master plan. Once the master plan is done and completed, then we'll go through a process of amending, uh, the ordinance. Uh, that will require further discussion, uh, but the basis for those discussions is gonna start here with the master plan. So, when we look back at, uh, some of the conversations that the planning commission had with the town board, um, there was, we did some, uh, revisited some of those at the meeting last week, or last month, but we also had a conversation last year that really started that, uh, in understanding that there, in the strategic plan, the township wants, the township board wants to see a balance of housing choices with a variety of housing types. So, that gives people, depending on where they're at in life, different options of where they can live, um, ensuring that there's different building types. You know, some people might want to be in a single-family home. Some people might be more comfortable in a condominium unit, or whatever that might be. The idea is that there should be a variety of, of housing choices. So, the, in the conversations between the planning commission and the township board, probably one of the big ones was promoting areas for, uh, new single-family homes. And this, we, there was a discussion about starter homes and the idea of, um, smaller home sizes on smaller lots. And, uh, in, when we, later when we look at our ordinance, we can see that we may not be able to permit those right now. There are to some extent, but there is maybe the ability that we could provide it, even in a better format. Uh, we do have some various areas in our township where we have some pretty small lots, with some small homes on them. Some of that could not be built today, um, because of the ordinance. So, this is kind of the thought of, you know, are there ways, you know, what's the priority here when it comes to, uh, providing the opportunity for the construction of starter homes. A couple other conversations, which are specifically necessarily housing, but other, are related to, that is, uh, improving the east side of the township. So, when we did the Barlow-Garfield neighborhood plan, talked about providing a variety of housing. Um, also, when there was this discussion of expanding water and sewer infrastructure. The ability to create housing, particularly higher-density housing, um, obviously, the key struc, uh, infrastructure has to be water and sewer, and I think there's been an effort, um, by the township. Obviously, it's all development-driven, it's usually developers as they are building, but that continued policy, I think, is important to allow for, um, higher-density development. And by that, I don't necessarily mean like apartments, but could be meanings, again, houses that could be closer together, that don't require a septic system and drain field, you know, along with a well and so forth, but allows that to be a closer-knit community. So, those were kind of the, the three kind of highlights of some of that conversation that we had, uh, between the planning commission and township board. I don't know if anybody had any comments or, on that?
The only thing I had on, you talked about the, uh, pilot program from your notes. You basically said the plan approximates fifteen percent, and you're at fourteen already.
Mm-hmm.
So, what are we gonna do? Just quit issuing them, or?
Well, so, I, I kind of get into some of that too, but so, one thing that's happening is certainly there are, there's a length of time on those pilot projects, those agreements. They are typically long-term, but we are also building new units. So, that doesn't, so that the, um, there are, are, are more units being added that aren't necessarily in pilot programs. So, the ability to expand that number will, will continue to happen. That was, and that's kind of a rule of thumb in there. That kind of gives some guidance to the township board. It's not hard and fast. Um, it's kind of a rough, rough number.
Okay, thank you.
John, to add on to that question, then, um, when did we start doing pilots? And what's the typical duration of the pilots we have such that, I'm assuming what you're, what you're suggesting is that, you know, you have some homes that will roll out of, that they'll, their pilot program will expire, and then you can take that and apply it to new pilots?
So, I don't know when the first one, I mean, we do have an inventory of those that's man, uh, maintained by the assessor. But, um, as I mentioned, there's, I think there's fifteen of them. There's been some recent ones, but I think the oldest ones are, I want to say they're about twenty years old. Um, don't know for certain. Uh, so the terms on those tend to be like twenty to thirty years, sometimes even longer. I think there's been a couple in there. Um, so I'm not sure when it, without looking at that, if there are some that are gonna come up, but, um, that is something that I think the, I know that the town board always is, is, uh, sensitive to is, is, you know, what is that kind of balance? Um, you know, how many is appropriate? Um, and so it's something that's kind of looked at every time one comes forward and to, to determine, you know, what is, you know, what, um, what's appropriate. They are also looking at, uh, the terms a little bit more stringent, maybe that was done in the past. And there are certain things, like service agreements for emergency services and so forth, that are provided, that are attached to those, in addition to the, um, pilot payments that are provided.
Would it be appropriate to perhaps include some of that information regarding when the fourteen percent of housing, you know, what, what that math looks like, for like a better way to describe it? And then, um, I mean, perhaps it would be a good idea to lay down in the master plan that, you know, are, we see our township maintaining this percentage of pilot programs going forward. I mean, it's just a plan, but it would allow staff and the board of trustees to point at something and say, "Well, you know, we thought about it, and our plan is that we would maintain this amount of pilot, uh, pilot going forward."
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, uh, the board has talked about it a lot.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, everybody is in agreement that we need to keep those numbers down, just to maintain a good tax base. It's been better since the supervisor has been negotiating these agreements with them to help take care of the fire and the water and those things. Before, that was not even on the table. So, he might grab ten percent or whatever he negotiates with them on that. Um, we have never turned one down. So, uh, and I, you know, when you get right there and you're right across the table from somebody who wants one of these, and you know it's an important project, um, you're not gonna turn it down, even if it goes over that amount. So, the reality is that, uh, we have talked about prioritizing which projects would be better. Well, you know, that's pretty subjective.
I, I guess I hear you saying that, that the trustees are maybe better off not having anything written down.
Written.
Yeah.
It's, it's not a bad thing to fall back on and say, "Well, we want this," you know, 'cause at some point in time, we're gonna have to say, "No. We just haven't yet." So...
You know, I think one of the things that, um, and I'm saying we necessarily have to include this in the plan, but the, uh, providing a variety of housing choices is also to, the ability to provide housing that is a good mix of incomes. So, um, one of the challenges is that, you know, I don't think you, you know, having high concentrations of pilot programs in one location could be a factor that could be evaluated, um, because you, I think it's important, or even in the, the pilots themselves, there could be a mix, there could be some market rate units mixed in with, um, uh, kind of the, the subsidized units together. So, that creates, uh, greater diversity, uh, so we don't have like large areas that are completely, uh, pilot projects. So, there could be something that, of that nature, that could potentially be provided. I'm not necessarily suggesting that we do something, but it, it does help, it could give some basis for the, the township board when they're going through some of these things, is to evaluate them a little bit better. Um, because it is kind of on a, one process, one application at a time, and it's, when you look at a project, it, it can, in that light, it kind of doesn't give you the context of how that fits in with the larger community. And I think that's a, something that the planning commission can kind of look at, is to say, "Okay, these tend to be multi-family types of developments for the most part." Uh, those, so maybe there are certain areas that, you know, we don't want too many high concentrations of it. This is just a thought at this point, but, um, the policy, I think, was a first step, and I know that the township board is going right now, right, through a process right now of amending that pilot ordinance to make it conform to MISHDA requirements, so that'll be up to speed.
Would you go as far as saying a thousand feet? You know, you gotta be a thousand feet, one project, so many feet away, or half a mile away, or, you know, whatever?
Well, I think you could maybe use that as a guide, knowing that it's, it's a guideline and doesn't constrain you, 'cause there may be a, a point where the town board wants a project and all of a sudden we bumping up into something.
Yeah.
But it does kind of give you some parameters to assess it and determine what, what, you know, the context of it. So...
Might be helpful.
Yeah.
The, um, has there been a spike in pilot requests in recent years? Have the, have they been, who has, or how long have we been doing them? Do we?
I'm gonna say, I'm just off the top of my head. I'm trying to think of that spreadsheet in my head that, uh, Amy DeHaan has. I, I think it goes back to like the late nineties, early two thousands.
Thirty years anyway.
Yeah. You know, one of the things that we, uh, and I don't know if we're trying to get some direction, uh, from internally within the township, is some of the legislation that recently passed. There's four pieces of legislation that passed at the end of last year. And one of those is, um, pilots that could be established by, you know, government like the township, for projects that aren't necessarily funded through MISHDA. So, that kind of opens up the opportunity for different ways to apply, uh, the pilot. So, for instance, right now, the way the law previously was done was that it had to be a, um, project that was funded or supported through the state, basically through MISHDA project. Now that the township can do a pilot for just any other types of developments, does have the potential to kind of broaden that approach. So, for instance, if the interest is to do starter homes, um, maybe there could be an incentive provided for that development to, uh, create smaller homes on smaller lots. Um, and the incentive would be some type of, uh, payment in lieu of taxes for at least a certain, whatever the term is. The trick to that would be, uh, ensuring that, that those are maintained, uh, as, I think the, the idea is to reduce the cost. So, how do you do that? That would probably require some type of, maybe like, uh, a third party, such as like a nonprofit housing developer or something like that, would be part in the ownership, uh, mix of that. Not quite sure. There's another piece of legislation that is, um, is a, instead of a pilot payment in lieu of taxes, it's a tax exemption. It's a, it, it builds on the model that the state has had for a long time. It's called PA one ninety-eight, which was used for industrial, uh, activities. So, if you were, uh, a factory and you're adding X number of jobs, a local community could provide a tax exemption based on that job creation. Now, that can also be applied to housing as well, and it can go, the tax exemption can go from one to twelve years. So, there may be the ability to do that, but the, I think the key to that is not just to give an exemption outright. The key is to give an exemption to incentivize something. So, for instance, let's say the developer would, you know, create, uh, smaller homes on smaller lots, get an exemption. Um, the key to that would be how to ensure that the, those remain at a cost, a price point where they would still remain affordable. It's not so much the size of the unit we're looking for. It's the size of the unit plus at a cost, uh, point that's accessible for people. So, there are things that we've seen in other places, like using community land trusts and so forth. Again, some type of third-party mechanism that ensures that, that the income, you know, of the people, or the people that are purchasing those homes are at a certain level. So, that's a concept that's a pretty big one, but I think it could be something that, uh, incentivizes the type of development that we may be looking for, that we're not getting. Um, so...
Oh, there are lots of different options. Uh, one of our neighboring townships, I recently found out, um, uh, they don't have a house-per-acre zoning. They have, as long as you stay within the front yard and the rear yard setbacks, um, you can put in whatever you want. Uh, there is a six-and-a-half acre parcel that I was inquiring about, and they are going to put, uh, right now Gordy Fraser is working on plans for thirty units, no water and sewer on six-and-a-half acres. Um, it's gonna be duplexes, and, you know, you, as long as you have the twenty-five-foot setback from the back, twenty feet from the front, ten-foot setbacks on each side, you can put as many as you want on there. And, uh, I talked to Jennifer a little bit about it, and she said, uh, that she thinks that they can design a septic system. It'll be a community septic. I can't imagine where you're gonna have a drain field for...
Thirty units.
Thirty units on six-and-a-half acres, and then, uh, it's going to be individual wells for each of those. And, you know, it seems to me that's a pretty quick draw out of that aquifer, you know, at seven in the morning. Um, but, um, there, didn't seem to bother them.
Is it Black Bear on Cedar Run Road that we're running the water, we're providing water to them?
Right.
It's a similar, that kind of density, and they have a package, well, I believe they have a package wastewater leak treatment plant that then discharges to a drain field. Um, and I don't know the well situation, whether it was community wells or...
That's in Long Lake.
It is.
So, they may have done cluster development there in order to get that. So, part of their property is open space, so they got room for drain fields and those kinds of things. This doesn't have any open space. This is gonna have hard surface on pretty good percentage of six-and-a-half acres to get thirty units. You know, so fifteen duplexes on there. They're gonna go up. They're two-story, and they're not gonna be out, but still impervious surface. That's a lot on that.
Well, the density.
Yeah, it's huge density. Uh, I mean, it's a different way to accommodate. Those units, uh, according to the developer, are gonna start coming in around two thousand or, uh, two hundred thousand. So, you can't buy houses. They'll go like crazy, and they're for sale. They're not for rent.
Mm-hmm. Cool. You mentioned in, earlier, that, just in passing, that there was some developments in our township where we couldn't do that today based on zoning. What's some, what are some examples? Give you an example of that?
Behind Myers.
Yeah, behind Myers.
Brookside, somebody.
Brookside, they're off of Frankie. Uh, we were looking at like Boone Street. That's what I kind of used in here. Um, I was just, you know, sometimes just looking at what's out there, what's been listed for sale of, on page eleven of the, the housing analysis. We, there was a, on Boone Street, a eight-hundred-and-sixty-four-square-foot home on a ninety-five-hundred-square-foot lot with water and sewer service. It's a three-bedroom, one bath, one-car-attached garage. So, that's, but that essentially could not be, uh, we don't have zoning for that at, at this point.
Right. They're typically like older subdivision, so they were either established before zoning, or just the lots were laid out. But, yeah, there's a handful of examples like that around.
I just wanted, my mind to picture one of them.
There's not, yeah, there's not a lot.
Brookside's probably the most visible one, based by, right behind Meyer.
So, we have, um, let me, before we maybe get into some of, and, and this can be some good conversation, but let me kind of just tell you where we allow residential right now, 'cause I don't think people realize that we, we allow it in pretty much every district, uh, with the exception of our park and recreation district, in different forms. So, our, our, our three main residential districts are R1, R2, R3. If you look on page nine of my, uh, the housing analysis, there's a, uh, table there with, uh, blue headers on it. So, the R1 is, basically, it's a single-family dwelling. Uh, the R2 is single.
Page eleven?
Eleven, yeah. The R2 is basically single-family and two-family. Then the R3 allows, allows single and two-family by right, but then it law, allows multi-family as an SUP, special use permit. Uh, but it is a, essentially conceived that, that R3 is really our multi-family, uh, residential dwelling district. We have a rural residential, which isn't used that much. Um, then we have the, um, the mobile home, uh, district, the RM district. Then we have the, the mobile home district, the RM district. We do allow in our commercial districts, a couple of different things. We allow, commercial district housing goes in our general commercial, our commercial highway and our planned shopping center. So that's essentially like if you were to take, I've kind of used this example, like let's say you take the old Sears at Cherryland and you could convert that into an apartment complex. That's something that we would permit through a special use permit, so nothing difficult to kind of go through there. But there are standards in there to kind of convert or provide that type of apartment type of building. It doesn't necessarily have to be apartments, but it, it's some type of typically attached housing or higher-density housing. The, also in the commercial districts, which also includes the office commercial and the local commercial, excuse me, not the office commercial, just the local commercial, but the other general commercial, commercial highway and planned shopping center is limited residential uses in commercial. So if it's, the units above first floor commercial or behind can be residential. So it's basically the front first floor has to be commercial, but above it or behind it can be residential. And it's pretty broad, it doesn't have a lot of requirements for that. We also do allow live-work units. Those are in our office commercial and then planned shopping center and then our industrial districts. So those are intended to be situations where you might have somebody has a apartment upstairs and then down below they might have their business that, you know, they can operate. So it's more of a limited, but it is even provided in our industrial districts. And then our agricultural district allows for single-family dwellings, but also allow something that we kind of consider i- in a way is an accessory dwelling unit, but it allows for farm employees' house. So it does allow for additional, if you have a, a farm in agricultural district, you have your, let's say your farmhouse, you could also allow for farm employees' houses on there as well. So
I wish, I'd like to hear Joe's thoughts on how many farm employees there are that, you know, need, required that housing and how much is provided or what's the demand for that housing? But we'll have to ask Joe some other time.
Lot less than it used to be.
Yeah.
I mean, back in the day, we had, even on the farm we still have in Silver Lake Road, there's, there're just storage buildings now, but there's five or six dwelling units that were built probably back in the fifties for the transient
Seasonal.
migrant workers that would come in to pick cherries. You know, there was a lot of those around back fifty, sixties and seventies. Then when mechanical harvesting took over in the cherry industry, it limited the need. So the, the need is, you know, I don't know in the ordinance, when it was written, what, what the concept or what, what timing that was, but the need is a lot less now. But I could see where there would still be some need where somebody's operating a farm and might supply more of a, of a home than, you know, these, these were not, I would consider homes, they were definitely seasonal temporary housing.
But you'd never sell them and you didn't rent them.
No.
And there was no income from them, they were
You just provided.
Just provided.
So there's also the schedule of regulations below that table, which kind of give you all of our requirements. But first of all, I just wanted to summarize, so we do allow a lot of housing-related lane uses. We can, you know, have the potential to adjust that. And one of the reasons I wanted to review that was that R2 district, which is mainly single-family and two-family. It gets a little complicated because when you look at our schedule of regulations, if you look down below in the, you'll see on the left side, you'll have the, like the R1 has with sewer or without sewer. Then there's the R2 that has one family with sewer, one family without sewer, and then R2 with, two-family with sewer and then two-family without sewer. And this is where it becomes a little bit difficult for people. For instance, if they are in the R2 district and they want to put a duplex in there, it's requiring, and I don't know if the, this necessarily shows it in the way, but basically like if you're in the R2 two-family and you got sewer, that ten thousand square feet, that's per unit, so technically you need twenty thousand square feet. So this is where we look, like, where we look back on kind of some of our older areas, like on that Boone Street, there's actually some duplexes down there. So, but they're almost, they're pretty much on single-family lots. And so this is an area we could definitely give some instant relief to allow for a duplex and, you know, maybe that doesn't, it would be more in tune to, with the, the one family and, in terms of the, the minimum lot area. So instead of twenty thousand, maybe it'd be something around twelve thousand, or even if it was dropped down to fifteen thousand would probably help. Same thing when you don't have sewer, two families says thirteen thousand five hundred square feet, that's per unit. So you'll need twenty-seven thousand square feet for essentially one duplex. So again, I apologize, the way this is laid out here does not show you some of the language that's specifically in the ordinance, but that's how it's
But the table reads kind of the same in the ordinance and so like when, we've had people come and ask and they've been confused as well, because they've been asking, so we had to explain like the two per unit or, or per dwelling unit. But yeah, using some of those examples and we can use things like some of the engineering and like water and sewer service areas to guide too, like it's easier to provide when you don't have to have space for a drain field or for a wellhead. It might make the most sense to kind of allow for that in areas where we already have water and sewer service available. Sorry, you go ahead Chris.
I was just gonna say, so the takeaway is that there's no density benefit whatsoever provided by the two-family portions of the ordinance?
Not really.
Correct.
We've had, for, one where this really kind of came to light to us is we had some property owners over on the east side of Barlow there that wanted to do duplexes and probably could make it work. But when we looked at this, ran into this requirement. So this is something that we certainly could, and we know that we do see some duplexes on, on, on some pretty small lots already existing. So we, we think that's one area that could easily be tweaked to allow that. I think there's a, a good opportunity. The bottom line is, is we think the R2 district has a lot of opportunities. Application isn't very far-reaching in the township. But that could be kind of this middle ground between the R1, which is, you know, the traditional single-family zoning district and the R3, which is kind of your full-blown larger multi-family. There's a potential for not just making it easier for duplexes, but also maybe like triplexes and quadplexes as well to make it a lot easier in that particular district and, and the potential to ply that district in more areas within the township, particularly where there's water and sewer available.
What is a duplex? I mean, it's maybe, maybe a silly train of thought or a question, but so your duplex counts as two dwelling units, right? Are they only allowed in certain zoning districts?
Yeah.
Because there obviously be, be a zero setback on one of the, is the land split into two ownerships? The building's split into two ownerships, there'd be a shared line and shared wall, so there'd be a
Well, it can be single ownership, they could be rented out.
Rented out, okay.
But you can, you know, one option that people could have is they, if they bought a duplex is you could live in one half and rent out the other half.
The other half, yeah.
So it doesn't necessarily have to be split ownership.
But you could.
You could.
You could.
Could though.
Absolutely could.
You're talking about if they'd be all sold individually.
They're all sold individually. But, you know, when you look at this, I'm not sure if these numbers are right, but on an acre, is it forty-two, five, sixty?
Yeah, forty-three, five, sixty.
So if you have a two-family on an R2 without sewer and you got thirteen fifty per unit, you could still get a couple, you know, three duplexes on there or so without sewer on an acre of ground.
Right. And it would still, you'd still have to meet the health department requirements for set, well and septic.
Right.
So you'd, in terms of their low, I think there has to be spacing for, between the well.
Fifty foot.
Yeah. And then I think, and I don't know if this is still valid, but they typically require a backup drain field or area, not, not the drain field, but an area for a backup drain field should that drain field fail at some point.
That's why I couldn't understand how you're gonna do that on six and a half acre.
Yeah.
And have a backup drain.
Yeah.
I agree, Molly. I don't think there's any reason to provide any additional benefit if they're gonna be on drain fields and well. The benefit is if they're gonna bring water and sewer to it, or if water sewer's available.
We also think, so the, I think we think the R2 district is kind of ripe as something that could be more of a transitional district that we could allow in more areas. The other thing that we're looking at is the R3 district is the, is the multi-family one, which does allow single-family and two-family by right, but then there's that SUP process for multi-family. And when we look at some of the multi-family developments, I think it certainly makes sense to have an SUP process if it's a larger, let's say sixty-unit complex or larger. But when we look at the Aspen Pines that was done, what's that street off of Barlow?
Oh, Floresta?
Floresta. That was done a few years ago, I think it was done in twenty eighteen, was approved by the planning commission as an SUP. That's eight units. That potentially could be something that may, could be done by right within the multi-family district. You know, so something maybe if it's, one thought process is if it's say ten units or less, maybe that could be by right. It would require administrative review of a site plan. If it's for instance, maybe ten units to, let's say twenty-five units would maybe not be an SUP, but would require a review by the planning commission. And then maybe say twenty-five and above would require an SUP process. So I'm just kind of throwing out those numbers, but maybe that could be staggered so that the process, if you're building a small kind of attached housing type of situation, that maybe that could be a lot easier process to go through. Because it's, it's, I think the larger ones where we have issues related to traffic and how they fit in with the, the context of the area that they're in.
And Aspen Pines, they did it essentially as like two buildings, so like we've been talking about like duplex, triplex, quadplex. Those are two quadplexes that, we think of them as apartments, because we don't have any other words for them and that's common like throughout, like that's what they talk about whenever we're at conferences and hear about missing metal housing. It's like, well, they call them apartments, but they're essentially quadplexes, which is one of those things.
That, that development you're referring to is all, also owned units, they're not rental units, right?
Are they owned? Or were they proposed as owned at one point?
They'd be condos if they were owned, wouldn't they?
Right. So I think they started out as apartments and then I think they went to condos and then did they stay condos? I think they were selling the development, so I'm not sure if it went back.
It may have changed hands at some point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, to, I
The design of them, yeah.
I only ask the question because I think it's, I think that's a form of single-family housing that's attached.
Sure, that's exactly.
It's a way to provide, I, I think personally the future of starter homes is not the white picket fence and the, the post-war, you know, whatever, it's an attached house where you can maybe start and, and have room to raise a, a one child and then when you decide you have more, you, you, you need more space. But I, I like what we're talking about in, in that regard.
Yeah. You're kind of talking more like a townhome or row house type of situation. It's not like in a complex, but could be along a roadway or something like that where it's just a series of attached homes or whatever.
I mean, it could also be forty-five, I forget the name of it, they were just
Bridge Forty-Five?
Bridge Forty-Five could be an ownership, ownership situation also. Where, to me, the point is that you, it's at a cost level where you're investing. Maybe it doesn't accrue value as much as a single-family home does on, on, on a lot, but it's something you can take out a mortgage against, you can make payments on. And the investment in that, that unit, one-bedroom or two-bedroom or whatever, is something that you can, you know, as a starting starter home, you, you're accruing value that can be transferred to a, a larger home at a later date when you, when, you know, when you've gotten older, you have more income, you need more for more family, you know, whatever. That's, that's my thought process. But we've got a, sorry to add, we, you've got, you gotta take, kind of take a look at it and say, you know what? We've got enough of that kind of housing where it accommodates the rental factor, you know, the rental market rather. We, but it would be okay to have more of that kind of housing as long as it was, I don't know how you control or dictate the ownership of that kind of housing.
Yeah, you, you, so that's where it becomes tricky than when I was talking earlier about the tax incentives. You really need some, I think it would be really difficult without having some type of third-party intervention in that because we, you know, typically when we're looking at developments, we're approving the use in, in the building types and, and how it all fits together. We really don't even, you know, the reference to whether it's owner, who owns it or whatever, does it, whether it's commercial, industrial, residential, it's really not a factor or there's anything that we could weigh in on. So for, to build something that could be either a condo or a apartment rental is something that we don't have control over. But there can be ways to do that if you were to have like a nonprofit housing developer that could maybe place a portion of that property, could be in like a community land trust where they, when there's transactions made between ownership, they ensure that, in some cases, it's, it's based on income, but maybe there could also be that it's for purchases only. So it's not, and I don't know if that's even feasible, but
There's the example we saw, it's down in, is it Grand Haven? Is that Robinson Court?
Right.
Were those all just sing, were there, were any attached or were those all detached, like starter home, single-family?
So they were starter homes, I think the price point in those were somewhere around a hundred and forty to one seventy-five for the ones that were based on income. They weren't, some of them were market rate. But there's a, the Michigan Community Capital, the one that was developing those instituted at a community land trust. So basically when you buy the, you buy the home, which you have joint ownership or some relationship with them in terms of the land that that home is on. So that when there's transaction from when the house is sold, it ensures that the people that buy that next time have, meet a certain income requirement. So I do know that, and this was a, a while ago, but Down Rivers Edge, no, Midtown.
That was just
Midtown. So some of the units on the backside that don't have a face the river, I think Homestretch was involved in that. Kind of the same thing. They have, I believe they own the property that the unit is on. And I think those are essentially like duplexes, they go up, I think, two or three stories. But I think you, in that situation, you, you are buying that as a homeowner, but you have a relationship where Homestretch ensures that you meet a certain income threshold. Now, I don't know if that is still in place, because sometimes those agreements have, are time-limited. So it depends on how they're structured, although I think community land trusts are, tend to be long-term, I'm, I'm not sure.
I think there's something that tickles the back of my brain, there's something in that relationship wherein the homebuyer gets to accrue appreciation in the home value to some amount, maximum amount. And then the, the additional value over that amount goes to Homestretch or whoever the relationship with this. Or there's, or there's some kind of relationship there that, that does that.
I think that's a short-term thing though. I don't think it's in perpetuity, you know, I, I don't, I think it's, and that's been the problem and everybody's kind of trying to solve that. Okay, you have low-income housing or workforce housing, whatever you want to call it. And you start out with that, but let's say two years down the road, so their value accelerates twenty percent or some other number. Okay, then all of a sudden now it's not in that, that bracket anymore. It's now moving up and they could move up a lot faster than that. and they could move up a lot faster than that, if you're, if you're close to the city.
So after ten years, they sell, and they're not selling to another um below market rate, they're, they're selling.
Right.
Yeah, I got it.
How, how do you control that?
Yeah, I know there's some HUD-funded projects several years ago, used to be more long-term, used to be like thirty years.
Yeah.
Now I think it's down to like fifteen, and so basically those affordable requirements are there for fifteen, and then after that, it basically becomes uncapped, and it's at whatever the market, um, so. Yeah, I don't, and, and I think that's the, the, you know, I think in all, when we have these conversations, there isn't really anything like the silver bullet that's gonna answer all this, it's gonna be a constant uh work, or, you know, but I, I think probably one of the important things that, we feel that, you know, maybe the ownership issue is, is gonna be a, a challenge, and I don't know what we can actually do on that. But certainly the availability of building types, housing types, I think is something to, to create, create more variety, I think is a, is something that we can, uh, you know, open up a little bit in terms of how we, our ordinance is crafted and so forth.
Yeah, that's definitely something we see with like um, everything from Michigan Association of Planning, like when we've distributed things to Planning Commission, uh, and I think you guys have that newsletter now, it's uh, they've picked, I think, the last three years, like an issue of the year, and it's been housing every single year. Um, cause it's everywhere around the state, they're dealing with this, and we know the market up here is uh definitely very crazy, but, kinda these different solutions, so.
So one of the things that we had support for in the community survey was accessory dwelling units. And I know, I think some of the board members are kinda maybe split on how they feel about that, but, that's something that we could, you know, look at in terms of what would be, you know, appropriate for those in certain locations within the, the, um, township, or maybe, you know, it's a situation where it has to be, um, you know, certain requirements such as, you know, it has to be owner occupied for the, the primary, the principal home, but the accessory one could, doesn't necessarily have to be, but, so there could be some direction provided by the um master plan, again, it's not providing the regulations, but it's providing the basis for it. Cause when I look back, I'm page six, and we look at uh, people were asked, should uh, Garfield permit accessory dwelling units or I E granny flats? And uh, we had about sixty percent there were in favor of that, so.
I'd like to study it more, I um, I think that if we studied it more, it would help us to better understand. I just, and, and I think I'm probably, apologize if I'm repeating what I've said about it before, but um, I don't have, I, 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 we could write rules about it. Um, but I just don't have a, a real solid sense of what neighborhoods uh it would be practical for, for a granny flat to be in. You know, I mean, I immediately think of someplace like um, what is it out on Zimmerman, that development?
Heritage?
Heritage or?
Heritage?
Heritage Estates, yeah, I mean, it seems like from a practical standpoint, that's the, the kind of how, I don't know how to put this. It seems practical that that kind of neighborhood or that, that size house would support something like that, but then I, I imagine, how does that fit? Uh, how does that, you know, that granny flat fit on the house, cause they all have attached garages? Um, where does it go?
Well, good, can it be detached, I mean, there's lots of questions with it, does it have enough land? You know, on the lot, how many square feet do you have, does it have water and sewer?
Mm-hmm.
Available, are you gonna let them be where there isn't water and sewer? You know, would it, right now, with our residential, um, Silver Lake doesn't have water and sewer. Uh, so do you exclude them because there's no water and sewer, and all of a sudden you've got two unit, living units on a piece of property? Or do we make them expand their septic systems to include those two bedrooms or whatever, however? Uh, you know, Heritage has got water and sewer.
Mm-hmm.
It would be likely that would be okay, but, and there are other places that have water and sewer, Silver Farms or Stone Ridge, or, you know, any of those, um, but whether the, they have their own bylaws, and then how do you get, how do you get around?
Yeah.
That kind of a thing.
I'm, I'm just worried that people sit, people think of it in terms of, oh yeah, they're doing that in the city, and it makes a lot of sense, because you've got alleys and a garage on an alley where you could throw a granny flat up top, and the impact is another car. Uh, and other than that, other than that, people don't notice, but I think we could come up with, I don't know, five to ten conditions that need to be satisfied, for there to be a granny flat, and then you kinda look around and see where, I'm just, I have this like, I have this gut feeling that once you come up with those conditions and look around.
Where are you gonna put it?
There's not really gonna be much place for a granny flat, which is not to say that maybe we wouldn't have something in the master plan, or some accommodation for, you know, twenty granny flats that could be created in the township, but, I just don't have, I don't have a strong feeling that it's really gonna be enough to solve housing problems.
Well, it's, it's definitely not gonna solve the housing problem.
No, not, not solve it, but I mean, even take, if we said the housing problem was, you know, take twenty percent of it, I think it's like a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, but if you could, if you could create twenty units, that's twenty places for people to live. You know, uh, at a reasonable price, so.
True.
I mean, I don't, I mean, it's good to look at the big picture, but I don't think if we need five hundred units, we're not putting five hundred units in like that, you know, we're, it's gonna be one bite at a time, to try to help solve some of those problems.
It, it, again, housing is, is, it has different needs for people at different stages in their lives, and, and, and this could provide something for, you know, people with extended family or whatever, they're looking for a place, but I kinda look at it, it's not too much different than, let's say, the bed and breakfast, thing that we were looking at just last month, earlier this month, you know, it's, it's creating that kind of, uh, you know, it can be within the unit, it's, house itself, so there could be an extra bedroom that could have a separate entrance off to it, so it doesn't have to necessarily be detached, it can be attached, it can be an addition, it can be carved out.
Basement, it could be.
Yeah, so there are different things, and, and I think what we can do is maybe look at some, uh, again, the master plan doesn't necessarily have to create the zoning text language, but we can put to some of those standards of what we think might be appropriate. And what we might also do is maybe, if we can investigate a little bit, is to see what that market is for ADUs. To see what, you know, obviously this, the, the thing of what, that works well within the city is that's that kind of that traditional form, of residential where you have a street out front, you have houses facing that street, you have garages that are going back in the alley, and a lot of times they can build up above that garage that's off the alley, provides, there's, you know, usually room for parking, you know, parking space or whatever. So it kinda fits in what we think of as kind of traditional, kind of these little accessory dwelling units. And I agree that, you know, we don't necessarily have the same form of residential development within the township, but there could be some situations that, you know, could be provided where this might work. I guess what we could do is, is we'll put some things together and maybe give some, like, how would this happen? Where might be appropriate, what is the market demand for something like that?
I think that's a good, and see, in some different communities especially, that might have a form more similar, like some that are not in core cities. Um, do they have some examples of like parameters or conditions that they would put us on? Cause it is kinda the difference of like, uh, right now, they're kind of, no, there's no parameters, or they're not allowed at all, unless it's the farm employee's house or something with a very specific function, so like, does it make sense to permit them at all with some conditions? Versus not allowing them at all, and it's sort of the difference of asking, when we do public engagement, um, not so much, would you like to live in one of these versus like, what if your neighbor wanted to do this, and it fit this structure? Would you be, would you be okay with that?
Yeah, Joe, Molly, what would it take to turn some of those old, um, you know, um, migrant housing, um, for farming?
Most of them are gone now, I mean, most of them, my parents had a dozen cottages. They bought a resort and moved all cottages on there, and people lived in those cottages at the time. And then uh, they went to a different deal, they had kind of exchange students that worked on the farm, and they were agricultural exchange students out of the University of Minnesota, and they lived in a bunk house. You know, but they, the units are not there, I don't know if too many that still have the houses around, none of our.
Like I say, we have, some of the, some of the actual buildings are still there, you know, there's, there's two, four, five buildings. And they're actually, we're all splitting two, so actually the building you look at was actually two units, you know, and the buildings are probably only twelve by forty buildings. Not very big, you know, or fifteen by forty, they're, they were small units that just, you know.
Was a bedroom and a kitchen and, you know, there, you know, that was a lot. At one, you were asking about where, one place that just clicked into my brain that would be uh, ideal kind of spot is right over here in North Woods. The lots are big, there's water and sewer, and, you know, they're right on their town.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
You know, so there are some, I guess we have to think more about where those kinds of places might be, but there are some that would really lend themselves to something like that. People wanted to do it.
Mm, mm-hmm.
Well, just, I can wrap up kinda this housing part, just, I just, on page eleven, um, it mentions about zoning for starter homes, but then it says other potential zoning ordinance amendments, and some of the things that we can look at. Uh, one, it'd probably be helpful for us to define uh some of these other types of building types that we don't necessarily have, in our ordinance. Um, we can look at uh maybe how we mix in residential uses with some of the non-residential. Like I mentioned, the commercial district housing is something that we think is a, is a really good uh example of how we can, are mixing, but maybe there are different ways that we can reorganize our commercial districts to allow for those a little bit easier. Um, in, in, in the ordinance, obviously we talked a little bit about dimensional changes, so what are some of those uh, you know, thresholds? That, you know, what are those minimums that we're trying to uh, provide in certain districts? Um, looking at some of our, our density levels right now, um, if you're, now, the planned unit development kind of opens up, uh, to all types of, you know, different density, but kind of your straight-up uh R three district is uh, you know, basically it's four thousand square feet a unit, so it's, it comes out a little bit more, it's uh more than ten units per acre. I think it's like eleven, I don't know, what is that, eleven point something, but uh, point being is that maybe, maybe that density could even be higher based in certain areas. Uh, as an SUP, it doesn't necessarily require a P U D, and we could go up, cause some of our P U Ds, when I look at them, we have, uh, some of them go into the twenty units per acre, uh, that were, in terms of a density. Uh, obviously those areas serve by water and sewer, so it requires a P U D to do that, but maybe there are some areas where we would say, instead of uh four thousand square feet an acre, it's something uh less, so that you could maybe get uh closer to maybe, you know, maybe it's eighteen units an acre through the, through the SUP process, but doesn't require to go through a P U D process. So densities are something we could uh look at in terms of adjusting. Um, and then I mentioned earlier, maybe streamlining permitting processes, so maybe you don't need to do an SUP to do something. Maybe it's just a simple site plan review by the planning commission, if you wanted to do a dozen units or something like that.
Well, we have a difference between uh retrofitting existing units to fit something and new construction. So when we start talking about it, there's a diff, there's gonna be a big difference between something that's planned, be that, and something that's gonna be retrofitted to add a unit or two or whatever to.
So I kinda just wanna move on, if there's any other questions, kinda move on to the planning summary with some of our neighboring communities.
Were we gonna talk about the, the map at all?
Will, I got, I was gonna cover that under the vision and core concepts.
Okay.
So this, this is just a summary of, we had, we met with the city of Traverse City, we met with Elmwood and Long Lake Townships, East Bay, and we reviewed some of the information at Blair Township. Um, the city, I think, is for the most part, it's related to the corridors, because most of the challenges, between the relationship in the city and the township is that uh topography and land uses such as wetlands and so forth, you know, really kind of alter the, the flow, this, the city has kind of a grid pattern, and with the exception of the area that's kind of down along Barlow, really that grid does not come out much into the township, and in many cases, it's because you have, you know, some large areas that are, either have a lot of, uh, steep grades and topo or, or wetlands and so forth, so those were just never really historically developed. Um, the one area we, so a lot of these corridors, we looked at, the one we talked about previously here at the planning commission, is kind of that uh front street uh where it comes out to Cedar Run.
Mm-hmm.
And that particular area, and we've talked about kinda building on the pattern that's within the city. They have, you know, West Front Street coming out of the downtown, it does have that, it's a commercial district primarily, that also allows for residential, so by the time when you get down to the, the uh little party store there, I forget the name of that one.
West Side Beverly.
West Side Beverly, you know, there, that's, you have some apartments right there, that technically is a commercial district that does allow for residential. But then from there to the, the city boundary with the township, there is a part in there that, it would, it's solely, um, uh, single-family residential, or residential I should say, not necessarily single-family. Um, but certainly that pattern going out towards Olson's, you know, providing sidewalks so that people could walk to the grocery store. Uh, we talked, um, you know, about the potential to mix in some maybe residential in that area. Certainly that area is still high demand for clinic space, office space, particularly in its proximity to Munson Medical Center. Munson uses that for a lot of their offices, you know, kind of off the main campus. So we definitely wanted to have that ability to do that, but maybe there are some ways that we can make that, um, you know, walkable area, include, um, you know, some mix of uses in there to include some residential. Um, I won't get into a lot of the other corridors, but I think probably for the most part, it was just a continuation. We did talk about veterans here, that the city is going to be redoing Veterans Drive this year, and it, it's gonna be, uh, kind of uh calming that, making it a little bit more narrow in terms of the lanes there and, and bike lanes, and, they are coordinating with the road commission, the road commission is gonna be resurfacing Veterans Drive, so maybe we can continue those bike lanes marked uh through, from Veterans Drive in the city through the township, I mean, the, the, the Veterans Drive already has some very large shoulders right now, that could just essentially be identified as bike lane, so it's not like you're really expanding the road or anything like that.
Sounds like the drive to these means is gonna be a little smoother from Fourteenth Street.
Yeah.
Well, it'd be nice to extend the, you know, we got sidewalks all around the building, but they stop.
Right. One of the challenges we have is this curve right here, we have one side drops off to the golf course, the other side is an embankment. But, you know, I, I think that's our definitely long-term, is this corridor has a, has a lot of potential to have a, you know, could be a really nice, mix of residential, some, we already have some apartments up here, and we have some offices and so forth, and have a nice, uh, it's not as busy. You know, it's not like CAS or, or Thirty-One by any means division, but it's, uh, has a good, nice, could be a really nice connection into the city.
We also had that non-motorized discussion with them as well, they're working on, along with their master plan, part of it is their mobility plan, is the city's working on theirs. Um, so kind of coordinating that one for veterans specifically, but just kinda seeing everywhere where we have a corridor with the townships. A lot of it is, um, we have our provision and our ordinance for uh, on new development, so, uh, that's been used to uh have some new sidewalks and trails, but as we see that uh going forward, uh, maybe establishing some priorities, uh, linking to a network that's already pretty well established in the city. It was good to kinda just coordinate, see where all of those were. It was good to kinda just coordinate, see where all of those were.
One other thing I'll just mention about the conversation, we did talk a little bit about Hickory Hills and, and the need to maybe having a different connection uh, to that location. Maybe coming off of Barney or something like that. Um, in the long term, you know, obviously it's, that requires a lot, but knowing that there's really kind of only one way in and out of there, you know, and knowing that interest in improving that property as kind of non-winter uses uh, would really make it, you know, important to see if there's another way that we can get in there from an emergency standpoint, but just for good traffic flow.
Well, and also the people that live on Randolph.
Correct.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah.
What are the opportunities with that rezone of particular Hickory Forest? I mean, why couldn't there be a provision for uh, where the township encouraged the city to put an entrance into that that area, uh, you know, up there, uh, into that forest? So if you were going there to hike the trails or mountain bike or something, that would be another entrance to park a car and enter into the, uh, those public lands.
Coming in from where?
Well, that's what I'm not sure of.
From Randolph, or you could come in from seventy-two, but it, the terrain is, I don't think you would get anywhere.
The only other frontage is like a little bit on Barney.
Is there enough frontage on Barney to provide for an entrance with to Hickory?
Well, we have to remember we're, we got Hickory Forest and Hickory Meadows is joint rec authority. Hickory Hills is the city. So with Hickory Forest, they're trying to figure, they actually only have a little piece of where they can get an entrance and that's basically at the end of Harris as it comes up to Barney. So they're trying to squeeze in a driveway right there and that'll just get enough to have a trailhead and allow for hiking on there.
So they're still privately owned parcels on either side.
Yeah.
They're planning an entrance there.
Yep, that's where their entrance, that's.
Not a drive-in entrance, just a parking space.
Well, it'll, there'll be a driveway that go into a parking area with a trailer. And that's it. I mean, it's intended to be very uh, low impact, you know, trails, that type of thing. A connection to Hickory Hills off of Barney is very tricky. Obviously that topography.
Oh yeah, I agree.
But, you know, and other options too, and I don't know if they would ever, there, you know, would be something out of the north, but it, it's it's challenging by any means, but it, it's certainly something we just wanna pose out there that ideally it would be good to have some, you know, alternate entryway to that. I think that gives us some of the heartburn that we deal with as they're trying to grow and expand that. Certainly we have to be mindful of those residences around there and if there's ways that access can be different. It's just something we brought up and, you know, long-term goal if possible. We did also talk with Elmwood and Long Lake, mainly as there's the effort right now to extend water service from Garfield into Long Lake. And there are some developments going along uh, the west side of Gray Road, south of M seventy-two. So that's kind of the northeast corner of Long Lake Township, section one of the township, and that's kind of their highest density area in terms of residential. So it has an impact on how we see the northwest corner of Garfield, which is you know, primarily uh, agricultural zoning. We have some R one zoning, but it's pretty much all planned for like one to three units per acre, uh, or even less, one unit per acre in terms of the agricultural district. So is something that is, we'll have to figure out what does that mean from a future land use designation along that particular area that's in Garfield Township.
Yep, it hasn't occurred to me, but those, I'm assuming they're apartment buildings going up on the southwest corner of Gray and seventy-two.
Yeah, that's Edge seventy-two is the name of that development, yeah.
Are those serviced by water and sewer?
No, they will be eventually probably serviced by water, but they will have their own uh, septic system for that.
I hadn't even thought, driving by and seeing that density going in there.
Yeah.
I hadn't even thought about the water and sewer issue and it, it's very much akin, Molly, to what you were talking about before.
Very dense, that's, yeah.
Yeah, there's also, they don't actually own the corner property. They own the, the corner that's south, yeah, southwest corner of Gray seventy-two was purchased by uh, Barnard Castle Oil. So again.
They're gonna get a gas station there?
Uh, potentially, there could be. Not at this time, so.
Well, it suggests to me, I had circled that on the map and I'm maybe skipping forward. We may wanna look at parity with the density that's going in, in the adjacent township.
Yeah, exactly. I, I think, and, and we're talking, we have a large area. I mean, we kinda see that as, I mean, there's not a lot of active farming going on there, so it's more of kind of large lot residential um, in that area. Interesting enough, when we talked to Elmwood on the north side, now Elmwood, the way it lines up, it covers the north side of seventy-two, both with Garfield and then about a mile of shared boundary with Long Lake. And theirs is to keep it agricultural and rural. And even though there was a solar farm that went in there in the corner, no plans to change or alter that, no infusion of.
Isn't that where, gosh, twenty years ago now, weren't they trying to put the baseball stadium out there? Fifteen, twenty years ago?
That goes way back. You're going, you're going back in time a ways, but yeah, they were originally talking, it may have been before Werfel Park though, isn't it? Or was it after?
No, I think Werfel Park wanted to locate.
Yeah, that's where one of the locations, I think.
But I, I, I know Elmwood fought hard for that to remain agricultural.
Yeah, and that's, I think their intent as well is to kinda keep that rural agricultural and, and not really change. So a little bit different from each of the townships there. So I guess it's us understanding, you know, what is, is, and we can, this is something that we'll get into when we start talking about future land use and future land use patterns and we'll look at the future land use map and what makes sense for that particular area.
Is that area, does Long Lake, either in zoning wise or master plan, have that identified as a, as commercial for a gas station to go in there?
I don't remember if we.
I don't remember the future land use.
Yeah. But certainly the, the, I think, was that, I think the Edge seventy-two was a PUD and I don't, I don't think that property was part of it, but I think that they envisioned some commercial along.
Well, it's, it's state highway, number one is state highway, number two, there's actually a stoplight there. So it's, it's certainly accessible. And it wouldn't be out of character for along a state highway to be a gas station and, you know, when you travel around the country, you see gas stations surrounded by farmland. So it's not that far, but it sure, sure is a big spread from, you know, some pretty high density residential and potentially a commercial gas station to our vision, which is, you know, quasi, yeah, you know, uh, not agricultural, but surely rural. And then, and then a complete agriculture on the north side, there's, when you make, there's slight variances in vision, there's pretty dramatic, dramatic variances.
And that's a good point, you know, that's why we're looking at each of those. Should we change our thinking to be more like what's happening in Long Lake? If they're gonna have all this high density kinda residential and that's where they're gonna have their high density residential, that's right button up to us. Well, do we wanna continue that or does it make sense to have that? You got all these houses and then you got all this farmland and then you got all the parks and, you know, how, how do we wanna do that?
Good look at for sure, so.
Well, the, since we're kind of on this, looking at kind of patterns of development, the last part, I just wanna kinda go with this kind of vision and core concepts. So as I mentioned, the township board put together a strategic plan in twenty nineteen. So it's those elements within that strategic plan that really kind of provide the foundation for the master plan. As a matter of fact, when, when we put chapters in the master plan, they're gonna be kind of in alignment with that strategic plan. So we're gonna have an economic development chapter, parks and trails, housing, et cetera. We'll kind of align that. So that's a good, that strategic plan is kind of a, a good a foundation uh, for a lot of planning, including the master plan. We also incorporated the vision statement when the township board did the uh, strategic plan, they actually did a vision statement. So we don't need necessarily to rewrite that, but that vision statement is in there um, as well. But what we then wanna build on that, and that's where this map kinda comes into play, is some of the core concepts. So that the future land use map as it is right now, kind of our observations is it really builds on a lot of existing land use patterns or how development has, has transpired over the years. And there's been some kind of decisions that have been made that kind of build on that. So in the applications of things, whether it's rezonings or things like planned unit development have built on that future land use map by altering the zoning ordinance. But what we're trying to do is how can we go a little bit more beyond that and trying to identify what is the character of Garfield and what is the identity? And so the vision statement kind of provides some initial part to that, but what we wanted to do was put these, what we're calling core concepts into the master plan that gives us a basis so that when we're making land use decisions, whether it's a rezoning or applying a PUD or even site plan uh, criteria and so forth, which all references back to the master plan, that we have a better sense of what is our direction and how are we gonna achieve it? So there was kind of four main concepts that we kind of identified, and this is just draft, this can change. But the idea that the township is really different depending on where you're at in any given place. So we're talking about the northwest part of Garfield Township, kind of a rural area, large lots. But then if you go over to like Barlow Garfield area, you feel very kind of more of an urban or at least suburban form of, of development uh, versus when you're down in Silver Lake area or somewhere along the Boardman River. So the idea is that we've got a lot of different places of diff, so there's different characteristics of those different places. Different field depending on where you're at within the township. And we got, you know, twenty-six, roughly twenty-six square miles. So how do we provide that kind of tying it all together and really looking at it, at these, these are places with their own identity, but that somehow they are, are drawn together. The master plan is one way to kind of draw that through a shared vision. We talked about housing and the access to housing is an important goal within the township and knowing that there are gonna be different places where we provide that housing and it's gonna look and feel different. If you're, you know, down in Spring Hill area, you're off of Garfield Road, it's gonna feel a lot different than, you know, if you are off of Barlow Street or something like that. Then there's this balance between trying to build a resilient uh, economic base through having places that provide jobs. We have a large commercial area. We have seen the change in that where it's been, you know, commercial businesses have shifted a little bit different. We see some of our, we've seen one mall that's uh, struggled and, and is, is going through transformation. We see another one that has challenges in itself as well. And part of that is just a changing landscape of the retail market. But how do we, you know, keep something that's uh, resilient, that is, can sustain changes? And how do we balance that with our environmental areas as well? So as where we wanna grow, provide commercial, provide options for industrial businesses, but at the same time, we wanna make sure that it's balanced out with those areas that we wanna protect. You know, the quality of the water, whether it's Silver Lake or Boardman River, um, you know, providing the parks that we do, uh, provide open space. And then an important part is connecting all of these areas, whether it's through roadways, which are most prevalent, uh, but they can also be through pathways as well. And how, so how do we connect those as well? So those corridors, the more we improve those, create better connections for the people so that we can get to where we wanna get going, whether that's by bike or by uh, walking or by car or moving trucks with goods and so forth. So those are some of the concepts, those are some of the foundation items that we put in there. The district's nodes and corridors are really patterns of development uh, related to those core concepts. And there's, one is districts, which district could be another name for neighborhood. But it could be something like the Barlow Garfield neighborhood that we created that sub area plan a few years ago. Or it could be a, you know, we're kind of trying to create areas that have names and places that have a sense of identity. I mean, Northwest Garfield doesn't tell you much other than that it's Northwest Garfield. But uh, maybe an area when people say Silver Lake, they're thinking of the, not just the lake, but they're thinking of the area around the lake. McCray Hill, it's the highway and the hill going down, but it's also the area around it. It's the Buffalo Farms and so forth. We use the term kind of like Garfield Center. Now, these are just things that we've kind of created. But the idea of that is kind of building around the Grand Traverse Mall. It doesn't mean just, you know, the mall, it's the crossings and so forth. And it's a lot of the commercial development in those particular areas. Uh, nodes are smaller, more intense areas that are typically high concentration, concentrated areas of residential or commercial or could be institutional uses. We have some kind of historic ones, like when people, I don't think they use it much anymore, but they do. And that's, uh, Green Hill is kind of that Zimmerman-Silver Lake intersection. We have some kind of newer emerging ones, like we have Copper Ridge, which is planned unit development. Everybody knows where Logan's Landing is at. We kinda talk about, we've kind of called it Cedar Run Campus, but that's that intersection area where Olson's is over there on North Long Lake Road and Cedar Run. That's kind of an identity. That's gonna be an area of higher activity, you know, sidewalks, it's gonna maybe have, you know, a mix of uses that kind of creates some type of an identity. And then getting back to our corridors and uh, we have some significant quarters, South Airport Road, it's a large one, US thirty-one. Some of these are not connected, you know, we've obviously been talking about Hartman-Hammond. That, those are two separate corridors, but the idea is to connect those and make those a single corridor. In our plans and discussions, have been talking about Zimmerman connecting to Harris, so that there's kind of a major north-south corridor. We have our traditional ones, the CAS Road, Veterans Drive and so forth. So this is really intended to identify these areas and then we can apply specific standards in these areas as well. So this is really just the identification of some, there could be some additional ones in here. So that when we look at uh, whether it's a rezoning or a development in the, in that area, we have the future land use designations. Those designations that, that we have up there, and I think there's roughly about a dozen up there. Those are twelve that apply through a twenty-six mile, twenty-six square mile area. So the agricultural designation and its description of what it is, is applied in both the southeast corner of the township and the northwest corner. So it doesn't have a lot of varying degree. It's saying this type of uh, land use pattern is gonna have these characteristics. What this, this idea of these district's nodes and corridors now provides more detail specifically to those areas that we're trying to create a character. So like, for instance, if we call, I mean, you, Steve and I kinda come up with some of these names, but the Spring Hill area, that's kind of the southeast area. So that's, that's looking down by where Traditions is at, where Ashland Park is, Burmley Hills, uh, Spring Hill Road, uh, Garfield. That could have its own set of standards for that particular area that we may uh, want to apply.
Like when we've been talking about some of the housing ones earlier, um, like for any of these, like uh, maybe those smaller lot kinda starter home or attached home makes sense in some areas of the township. By using this, we can point to some of those areas, like maybe in Barlow Garfield district, it makes more sense than in Spring Hill neighborhood or something like that. Um, if we wanna talk about um, corridors and have something specific like uh, on thirty-one uh, or South Airport Road where we want to uh, maybe deal with access management or non-motorized access, it might be priority on certain corridors. Uh, so it allows to kind of uh, address it in a way. I don't think anything's gonna be nearly as extensive as the Barlow Garfield plan, but even uh, a portion that discusses a specific district or node or corridor that says, these things are important in this area. And as John said, we like to come up with names through things. At one point, we had seven hills in here. We were trying to get the seven hills of Garfield.
Seven hills of Garfield. We identified seven.
Seven anymore, but yeah. Popular uh, opinion and change, so please come up with good names.
Again, it, it, it creates certain characteristics in these particular areas um, that are specific, you know, like Steve mentioned. Again, it, it creates certain characteristics in these particular areas that are specific, you know, like Steve mentioned the corridor, like Hartman-Hammond, we've all kind of agreed that particularly the Hammond corridor is not going to have commercial, it's gonna be more of a backbone for the area that has industrial uses, that has high-density residential, some institutional uses and so forth. That's specific to that corridor, so, you know, access is important, we, we limit access where driveways are. Whatever those characteristics are, those are inserted in the master plan specific to those areas. So, it is kind of like taking the concept of the Barlow-Garfield neighborhood plan, where we had very specific standards for that development area, and doing a bunch of those throughout the township. Some in the form of a corridor, some of them is a small node or, or smaller district. So, it's the same concept, but now applying it specifically to areas around the township. We also identified, and this is just something we want to get your feedback on, these yellow areas that we call new residential development areas. So, we're, we're kind of maxing out, when you look at our zoning map, particularly some of the higher-density areas, and this isn't strictly just higher-density areas, but residential in general, some of the areas, particularly on the east side of the township are getting kind of built out, and so we're kind of looking at areas where maybe we can provide for new residential development. So, we look at the area at Burmley and Emerson, where we have Ashland Park, that'd be nice to have that built out, but maybe there's areas on the, the east side of Garfield, which could be served by water and sewer and allow for a single-family residential. We have the area behind Sam's Club that could be developed for a single-family residential. We've looked at the area kind of north of Zimmerman there, where the Harris Hills, that development went in, that, that never went forward, but that could be an area in there where some residential, previously when we were looking down at Rennie School Road and thirty-one, back in January, when we had that conceptual plan for some development back there, maybe in that particular area there could be some residential. These are just some spots that we're thinking, where are areas which potentially could be served by water and sewer, which could allow for new residential development? This puts us a little bit forward-thinking, and, and what our desires as a township, as opposed to, you know, certainly a lot of times, we're responding to development proposals and trying to figure out best ways to do them. This gives developers a sense of what we're interested in from a community, we know we gotta grow, we know we have to have places for people to live, where are those best? Where are those best fit based on our water sewer system, based on other similar land uses? Where do we think there'd be some really nice places to live that haven't been built yet in Garfield Township? So, that's another one we'd like to kind of throw out there as well. And that wouldn't necessarily be part of the nodes, district corridors, that would play into when we get into future land use designation, and then ultimately making zoning map changes. We're just a lot at you in a very short period of time.
It's a good intro.
Later, later this summer, once we get through some of these different topics, these chapters that we're gonna go through, I think it's when we get around September, we're gonna look at the future land use map and start making changes. We'll also be looking at how these will be applied as well, and these district's nodes and corridors, and putting some standards into them as well. And ultimately, I think what we're, what this concept does is to help to create a certain quality of life in Garfield. There's certainly some opportunities, we're a growing community, we have a lot of investment being made by people, it's how do we leverage that in terms of making it a, a much more enjoyable place to live? You know, the township board has put a lot into its park system, and continues to do that, and that creates great value. People want to be in places which have a high quality of life, employers want to locate in those places, because those are places where their employees want to live. So, the, this is part of creating, building on the vision that we have started to create something that is going to, again, make the community a, a much better quality of life, and then, you know, I think there's always room for improvement, and this is attempted to kind of provide a roadmap towards that.
Any, y'all see any questions that we covered a lot, thanks, great, great introduction and start to the process, for sure. Other questions on that, we actually move on to our second public comment, so, anybody in the public has any comments? Well, just come up, you just state your name and, and address for the record.
My name's Carrie Yuli, I'm at thirteen ninety-seven Alexander Drive, which is in Ashland Park of the Spring Hill District. Well done, this was spirited conversation. I moved here with my family in two thousand nineteen from Orlando, Florida. I came here to get away from the sprawl, to have a good place to raise my kids, and for the outdoor recreation opportunities, and I'm kind of a case study of what you were just talking about, right? Like, I came here for the things that you are trying to make Garfield Township. I was at some of the community engagement sessions that were done at the Health Department way back when. I'm glad to hear you talking about a, a sense of place, perhaps design controls and things that can be there so that we know where we are, and so that it's not sprawl, and in Florida, it was Target after Target after Home Depot after Walmart. One thing I would say is kind of looking forward, making sure that your planning also allows for additional schools, what's gonna happen when you build all those apartments and you've got kids coming in, and I don't know what the funding looks like that for here, but that was a problem in Florida. And then also that I'm hopeful that some of that density will drive up the desire for smaller commercial areas. I'd love to see a coffee shop right there by Ashland Park, and perhaps some, some non-motorized connectivity. I'd love to be able to get up north of South Airport and connect into town. So, well done, I'm just here as a community member, I feel like if I'm not here sitting here, you don't know if anybody's watching or not. There was a comment one day about, well, nobody's here for public comment again, so, thank you for what you do, and I'll, I'll keep showing up and paying attention.
Well, thank you for doing that.
Happy to have you.
Since there's no other public, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and other business, I don't see anything under other business. Okay, so, items for our next agenda, our next meeting will be April twelfth, it's like we have Hickory Forest and Hickory Meadows rezoning, the public hearing, three public hearings, that, Pine Grove Homes public hearing, and the Lagone Bed and Breakfast public hearing, anything else you see on the agenda, potentially, horizon there?
Not at this time, we did not receive any new applications in March, so, yet, we did talk about South twenty-two, you know, at the last meeting, what we're, what we're doing right now, we've asked them, if they want to see a, potentially about merging those two special use permits, we need to have a legal opinion on that, so they, they are, we're expecting them to submit a escrow to cover the cost for attorney review of that, but that's where that's at. We know that, obviously, that project will come back at some point here, but no new applications at this time, so.
Is that odd for spring?
Sorry?
I said, is that odd for spring?
Well, usually, we're, if we're gonna do it, we're gonna be more busier in the winter, but it's been, you know, we've been pretty steady for the last few years, and then last year, I kind of noticed that it was slowing down, and then this is, this is kind of slow right now, but you have to realize, we've proved a lot of things. I mean, we're looking at what's going on with Cherryland Center and, and all of that, and the, you know, the Meyer develop, redevelopment, and the coffee shops and all of that, there's been a lot of stuff approved, so, there's a lot of construction yet to be seen by the community that it's gonna be happening, so.
Yeah, there's a lot of things going over to the other side of the hall, Mike has.
Yeah.
Been gotten a lot of stuff.
Yeah, they're getting a lot of plans in the Building Department right now.
Mm-hmm, good. All right, well, with that.
I'll make a motion, will you adjourn?